So it is confirmed that we do have a quorum present. With that being said, I'm going to call the Town of Millville's annual town meeting of May 10th, 2021 to order at 7:03 PM. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Please remain standing for a moment of silence to honor our civil servants and military personnel, along with frontline personnel who are dedicating their lives protecting our freedoms, safety, and democracy. Thank you, you may be seated. So I'd like to welcome everybody back to the elementary school auditorium. As you can see, due to COVID, we had a few meetings outdoors, but we're back in our old stomping grounds here. Despite the indoor location, I'd like to remind everyone that we are still taking serious precautions to keep everyone as safe as possible this evening. I appreciate everyone adhering to the social distancing and the seat spacing that's been laid out tonight. I'm requesting that masks be worn by everyone in attendance for the duration of the meeting, even if you decide to come to the microphone to speak. At this time, I'd like to introduce everybody here on the stage. So on this side, no, this side, sorry. This side, we have Jennifer Gill, Andrew Alward, Adrian Pettit, and Todd Trotia representing our Board of Selectmen. On this side, we have Aubrey Bono, Brian Pacheco, Ken Tubman, Gary Gill, and in the back, Angela Prizio, sorry, Angela Prizio, our newest member of the Finance Committee. We also have Diane Lockwood, our town clerk, sorry, it's even written in front of me, town clerk. And over here, we have Peter Caruso, our town administrator, and Brian Riley, our town attorney. I'd like to remind everybody, please silence your cellphones. If there are any visitors wearing an observer badge that you are not registered to vote here in the Town of Millville, I'd ask that you please come to the front row. And if you are here as a registered voter, please be sure that you checked in in the back and that you have a pink card. It's a voter registration card, and we'll be using those to vote tonight. So if I can't see it, your vote won't be counted. If anybody doesn't have their pink card, please go check in at the back table, and the clerks will give you one. At this time, I would like to make a few procedural notes. Everyone is expected to be respectful of everyone in attendance and of this meeting itself. You don't have to agree with everyone here, but I'd ask that you remain respectful. As moderator, I have a responsibility to ask anyone who is not conducting him or herself in a manner to leave. Going forward, I'm going to read the article, and then a motion, and it will be moved. There'll be a three-minute limit for the person who moves an article to discuss it. Any resident wishing to speak for or against an article may raise their hand. I will recognize you, and then you can come down to the microphone that's located here. You'll be asked to state your name and address clearly for the record, and then you'll be given up to three minutes to speak. At the conclusion of three minutes, I will thank you for your comment, and you will need to stop speaking and take your seat. After every resident who wishes to speak has a turn, people who wish to speak again may have another three minutes. You'll notice that there are wipes and a trash can up here with the microphone. If you do speak, please keep your mask on. You can go up, wipe down the microphone, throw your wipe in the trash, and then we, and I'd ask that you come up through this aisle here, and then return to your seat using this aisle. That way there, we can keep, if there are more than one person who'd like to speak on something, we can have them come up to the microphone and then return to their seat this way. All questions and discussions should be directed to the moderator. If appropriate, I'll then ask someone on our stage to respond. Please do not address a previous speaker, specific town official, or another resident directly. Discussion and questions must be relevant to the motion that we are voting on, and it's my job to ensure that this rule is followed. I will limit discussion if a comment is not within the scope of an article that is being voted on. Throughout the meeting, there may be instances where I allow a non-resident to speak if they can contribute relevant information or offer expertise to any article that we are voting on, provided that there are no objections. This could include, but is not limited to, our town administrator, town council, superintendent, members of our school committee, or department heads. I just want to make sure as well that everybody received a packet when they walked in, this should have been handed to them. This packet includes the warrant information, as well as page. Oh, there's not a page number on it. There's a graph in here that shows the stabilization account balances that are relevant for tonight's information, and then a detailed nine-page budget that we'll be voting on as one of our articles this evening. If anybody didn't get this, they can raise their hand, and we'll have somebody bring one over to you. So when the warrant is posted, the articles are written as they were posted. You'll notice tonight, some of the motions may be a little bit different than the original articles as posted. If you have a question, you can raise your hand, come down to the microphone and ask it, but I think that the motions should be self-explanatory themselves, and everybody should be able to follow along. So without any further ado, we'll commence the business of this meeting. Going forward, I'll report, I will prepare, I will propose a motion. Somebody on the stage will move it. So again, the wording may be a little bit different, but we'll, we'll get through it together. So motion one, monetary increases. We'd be looking for a motion to see if the town will vote to authorize that any motion... Sorry, I'm reading off the warrant, like I just told you not to do. Okay. We'd be looking for a motion that the town vote that any motion or amendment to increase any monetary articles or line items as recommended by the Finance Committee presented at this town meeting shall be out of order unless such a motion or amendment states the source of funding as being from available free cash or the line item, article, or other funding sources that will be reduced by the same amount. Is there a motion?
So moved.
There's been a motion by Aubrey, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brian. Aubrey, did you want to talk about this article?
This is an annual article that is on the warrant. The purpose of this article is that if anyone moves to suggest that a budget line item be increased, the funding source for that increase must be stipulated. So that funding increase could come either from another line item on the budget or any other available funding. This year primarily, that would be our stabilization accounts.
Thank you, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your pink cards. All those opposed, please raise your pink cards. The eyes have it, and I declare it unanimous. Article two, bills of prior fiscal year. I've been, it's been confirmed by the town administrator that there are no bills from the prior year, so we'd be looking for a motion that the town take no action on this article. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Aubrey, is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Ken. Aubrey, did you want to talk to this article, or?
There are no bills of the prior fiscal year, so we are recommending removing this article.
Excellent. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor of striking the article, please raise your pink cards. Okay, put those down. All those opposed, please raise your card. The eyes have it, and I declare it unanimous. Article three, snow and ice deficit. So we'd be looking for a motion that the town vote to transfer $73,648.70 from the General Stabilization Fund to fund the deficit incurred with the snow and ice budget per Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 31D. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Aubrey, is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Gary. Aubrey?
So this is also an annual article that seeks to transfer from available funding to pay the snow and ice deficit, which is an account that can be lawfully overspent according to Mass. General Laws. The latest tally of the snow and ice deficit from the Highway Surveyor was $73,648.70. Typically, we would recommend free cash be used to allocate to that deficit, however, our free cash is not available this year, so we are recommending that that amount be transferred from General Stabilization to fund the deficit.
Thank you. Are there any further comments or discussion on this? Because this is being funded from stabilization, it requires two-thirds of the majority in the room to pass this, so all those in favor, please raise your pink cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise their pink card. The eyes have it by a two-third majority. Article four, the Highway Department, Chapter 90. We'd be looking for a motion that the town vote to accept and expand such sum or sums of money allotted to or be allotted to the town from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 90, or under any other state roadway reimbursement programs for the fiscal year 2021, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a contract or contracts with the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division for such purposes, and further to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow in anticipation of 100% reimbursement of set amounts. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Jackie, point of order, you said 2021. Should be 2022.
It's written wrong in the script. Thank you very much, point of order, so it's going to be for fiscal year 2022. Motion made by Aubrey, is there a second? Second made by Angela. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your pink cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your card. Seeing none, the eyes have it, and I declare it unanimous. Cable licensing fees, Article five. We'd be looking for a motion that the town vote to transfer from the Peg Access and Cable Related Funds Account, the sum of $7,500, to be forwarded to the Superintendent of Schools of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District for use by the Director of Library and Media Services to enhance the curriculum offerings that are available in the school district. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Jennifer, is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Andrew. Jen, would you like to discuss this?
Sure, so this is something that the BMR School District uses to enhance their curriculum. We were actually talking earlier with the gentlemen that are recording tonight, and they actually had an intern that was from the school district previously.
You gotta hold it closer.
Oh, how about now? I feel like I want to sing feelings now. So this is something that the school district uses to enhance the curriculum, as stated, and we were talking earlier tonight that at previous meetings, I don't know if any remembers, we had a young lady doing some of the recording, and she was from Blackstone. So this is something that just helps the school district.
Thank you, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please hold your pink cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your card. The eyes have it, and it is unanimous. Okay, Article six is going to be the fiscal year 2022 budget, and at this time, I'm going to turn the podium over to Aubrey, who will get up and speak for a few minutes regarding the budget.
Thanks, Jackie. The fiscal year 2022 budget that is being recommended by the Finance Committee is as close to a balanced budget that Millville has seen over the past many years. This year's recommendation is unique in that, in addition to the historical revenue streams that have been available to us in the past, this year, we are able to incorporate a brand-new revenue stream to Millville, cannabis revenue. This revenue stream was conservatively projected for FY 2022, but it signals an optimistic path to allowing for further opportunities for taxpayer spending in the future. Additionally, the FY 22 recommended budget is unique in that it does not call upon significant one-time revenue sources to balance. The recommendation the Finance Committee has set forth uses less than $7,000 of one-time revenue in the form of stabilization monies to balance its spending. Over the past several years, we have discussed the importance of balancing our budget using recurring revenue sources rather than one-time revenue as a way to ensure our town has a sustainable future. Typically, at annual town meeting, our spending articles, in addition to our spending articles, we have articles on the warrant that appropriate money from free cash to our stabilization funds. As a reminder, free cash is leftover revenue from the prior year that can be used for, among other things, replenishing our stabilization funds. Our stabilization funds are our savings accounts used for capital spending and other important purposes. This year, you will notice that we have several articles on the warrant that appropriate money out of our stabilization funds to purchase capital items, as well as balance our FY 22 budget. However, this year, there are no articles to replenish those stabilization funds using free cash. This is not ideal. Millville's free cash was certified this year at -108,639 due to a timing difference between highway monies spent and corresponding Chapter 90 revenues received. The certification of free cash as negative is not something that is supposed to happen if we operate precisely. Since we do not have free cash available to us, we are not able to replenish any of our stabilization funds at this time. This fact makes it even more imperative for us not to use stabilization money to balance our budget. We have a current functioning capital program committee who has established a thorough five-year plan to help meet the long-term goals of the town. For capital planning to be successful, we need healthy and regularly replenished stabilization funds. I ask the residents of the town to consider these points when making any motion to hold a department's line item. Any increases to the budget recommended by FinCom will require stabilization funding or another budget line item as a funding source. This year's recommended budget has many highlights. The recommended budget increases funding for the turning on of our streetlights. The Council on Aging is recommended to increase its funding by 27%. Our library is recommended to increase by 18%. The budget recommended represents 4.45% increase to all of our public safety funding. The education requests were met. Finally, 2% salary and wages increases for non-union employees are being recommended. Notably, this budget was recommended unanimously by FinCom and by the Board of Selectmen, which shows unification of the financial vision of town leadership. The goal of this Finance Committee has consistently been to recommend a budget that is prudent and sustainable for the Town of Millville. It was not long ago that we were in dire straits financially. Today, we are in a much better position thanks to the diligence of town leadership and departments and the discipline of previous town meeting citizens' votes. Millville's financial team has been built out, our stabilization funds are healthy, and our town's books and accounting, although not there yet, are a focus of town leadership. Thank you in advance for considering these items when making your contribution with your vote. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Aubrey. So now what we will do for this article is we will go through all of the line totals, the department totals, as we normally do. If anybody would like to change, please yell "hold" when we get to that line, to that department, and we can hold it. We'll vote all the departments that were not held, and then come back and individually take each department that was held. Are there any questions? Okay. Town moderator, zero. Board of Selectmen. $579. Town Administrator. Finance Committee, $135. Finance Committee Reserve Fund, $29,400. Town Accountant, $49,926. Town Audit, $24,000. Board of Assessors, $52,864. Treasurer Collector, $100,716. Legal, $40,000. Technology, $25,150. Town Clerk, $52,871. Planning Board Zoning, $27,454. Thank you. Oh, up top, Conservation Commission, $891. Thank you. Town Hall, Old and New Buildings, $151,408. Annual Report, $500. Police Department. Fire Department, $258,423. Building and Zoning Enforcement, $54,471. Civil Defense, $850.
Jackie, can I hold Building and Zoning? I think you may have misstated the...
Who's holding it, please? I need a name for the hold.
I can hold it.
Aubrey?
Yeah, I just think you might have misstated the number. I don't know if you want to...
Building and Zoning Enforcement, $52,471.
I'll remove the hold.
Thank you. Fifty-five, 52,471. Civil Defense, $850. Animal Control, $9,750. Tree Warden, $13,500. Public Safety Communications, $72,556. MES Ground Maintenance, $67,650. Blackstone Valley Tech, $352,036. Norfolk Agricultural Technical, $174,220. Tri-County Vocational, $65,896. Blackstone Millville Regional, $3,239,741. Keefe Technical, zero. Highway Department, $156,676. Highway Snow and Ice Removal, $80,000. Townwide Fuel, $24,000. Highway Street Sweeping, $21,000. Storm Water Holds On... Highway Street Sweep, $21,000, good to go? Okay. Storm Water Management, $35,500. Public Street Lighting, $20,000. Board of Health, $29,500. Council on Aging, $38,674. Who would like to hold? Pat Finn. Okay. Veteran Services, $10,500. Library, $41,680. Who's holding? Colleen Kiras. Recreation, $5,500. Memorial Park, $5,250. Historical Commission, $675. Debt Service, $181,994,000. Memorial Day Celebrations, $500. Thank you. Regional Retirement, $215,751. Unemployment Insurance, $3,000. Health Insurance Fringe Benefits on Behalf of Employees, $120,000. Dental Insurance Plan, $5,310. Medicare Fringe Benefits on Behalf of Employees, $16,265. Other Insurance, $115,000. So we're not going to read the grand total because some items have been held, but at this point, what we'd be looking for is a motion that the town vote to appropriate a sum of money as deemed necessary to defray town expenses for the departments, including debt and interest and compensation for town officers, and to provide for the reserve fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021, and ending June 30th, 2022, with appropriations to be funded as follows: to raise and appropriate sums of money and to transfer from the Septic Title V account, and to transfer from General Stabilization based on the budget line items that were not held. Okay, so we're just voting the articles, the departments that were not held. All those in favor, please signify by raising their pink cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your card. So the eyes have it, it is not unanimous. So now we will go back to the lines that were held. Aubrey, you were first. No, we struck that one because you were okay with it once I read it correctly. So Mrs. Finn, if you'd like to come down, state your name and address for the record, and you can have three minutes to tell us why you held line 299, Council on Aging, recommended amount was $38,674.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the Council on Aging budget as follows. Can I do that?
Talk nice and close to it.
That's right, all right. Can I turn around? All right. I'd like to make a motion to amend the Council on Aging budget as follows: to add back $3,500 to the senior director's salary from $13,054 to $16,554, and to add back $1,500 to the van driver's salary from $6,600 to $8,100, or a total change of $5,000 to the Council on Aging budget from $38,674 to $43,674 as originally submitted, and that would be a transfer from General Stabilization.
Okay, did you want to discuss why you're making those recommendations?
Yes, please, all right. All right. On the director's salary, our originally submitted COA budget for $16,554 was actually only a 2% increase per guidance to what the COA director is being paid. Unfortunately, the budgeted amount for the salary in 2021 was approved at $9,837 and has been supplemented by a state formula grant. We are requesting this budget item to be increased so that the Town of Millville is fully responsible for paying the singular town employee responsible for the 1 million-plus facility and over 630 senior citizens in the town. Now, as a fact, there are over 630 seniors aged 60-plus in Millville. That is 20% of the entire population of Millville, excuse me. Yet, the budget request for this fiscal year is less than 7 tenths of 1% of the entire operating budget for the town. of the entire operating budget for the town. If we do not put back the $3,500 towards the senior center director's salary, we will in fact be paying her $13.94 an hour, which is only 44 cents an hour greater than minimum wage. She could actually make more money per hour by working as a cashier or a bagger at Shaw's supermarkets. As an aside, as was adopted at the special town meeting on November 4th, 2019 by Article 2, Subsection 20.8, the pay raised for a senior center director, grade level 4, was minimum $16 per hour, medium $19 per hour, and maximum $22 per hour. Our original submitted budget of $16,554 is in fact $17.60 an hour, or just slightly above minimum as adopted by the town. And that was in 2019. As the sole employee at the senior center, our director is responsible for all programs and services provided at the center. This includes social, recreational, health, safety and education programs, and services. The SHINE program is also provided, which means serving healthcare information needs of elders. We're asking for the $3,500 back so that we do not have to use a state formula grant to pay for salaries. Although the constraints of the grant usage has been relaxed due to COVID, according to Adam Frank, the coordinator for the COA and Grants for the Massachusetts Executive Office of Elder Affairs, it needs to be used to serve the mission of our COA as well as to be consistent with our local statutes. Our COA mission is stated on our town website, and it does not say that our mission is to pay for salaries.
Ten seconds, Pat.
Okay. We want to use this grant for programs and services for the seniors. I can touch on the van drivers. We have three part-time drivers now handling up to 15 trips a week for vital appointments. If we do not fund this, we have to tell the seniors when they call, "I'm sorry, but we cannot allocate funds to meet your needs." But the good news is, we almost balanced our budget. So please consider everything you've heard today when you vote on the item. Let's be responsible to pay for services rendered to the citizens of Millville.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on the amendment? Jennifer?
Okay, can you hear me? All right, that's good. So if you look at line 371 of the budget, you'll see a 2.68% increase. So that's the only increase that we get on revenues. So when we're looking at other departments that get increases of 27% and 18%, that means that they've gotten much more than any of the other departments in terms of an increase. Do you want me to take this off? Okay. Okay, so let me start again. If you look at line 371, you'll see a 2.68% increase in terms of what the town got as an overall increase. So when you see budgets that have gotten increases of 15%, 20%, 25%, they've gotten much more than any of the other departments have. And, you know, to learn that there are the grant funds to close this gap in an interim basis, I think that's something to consider as well. And then lastly, we trimmed this, well, the board trimmed this to try to minimize the amount of money that we take from stabilization. And you heard Aubrey state that that's really so important to keep our budget in line and balanced and continuing to use recurring revenues. Now, as we get free cash in November and other things like that, we can go back and revisit these items and bump them up a little bit in November should we have free cash. We can look at cannabis revenues and see how they're doing. Because if we even got just $20,000 from cannabis this year, that would have made a world of difference in this budget. But we just can't spend money that we don't have. I'm very sympathetic to the seniors, which is why they got such a big increase. And you'll see there are other articles on this warrant to help the senior center as well. So we need to, you're asking for money that we just don't have. I wish we did, but we don't. And we can revisit it in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on the amendment to increase? Dina? And I have to get better. Can we come, when you come down, please state your name and your address for the official record. You were Jennifer Gill. Sorry.
Christine Cook. Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Christine Cook, 146 Providence Street, Millville.
Thank you.
I'm the senior center director. And I just wanted to say, in as far as the increase that we are asking, it's really not an increase. It's what, as the director, I should be getting paid. Primarily, I do not want to use the formula grant if I don't have to. This is something that I would prefer to use for the seniors. In as far as perhaps a grabbing goes, maybe new sports, you know, treadmills or something for the seniors to use, I'd rather use it on the seniors than having to use it on my salary. And then as far as the van drivers, we do have three van drivers who have other part-time jobs. And they are certified by the Mass DOT, have to complete courses two or three times a year. We've had over 265 runs. And currently, at this point in time, I'm $1,600 over on what we have for the budget for 2021. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Mr. Finn?
Gary Finn, 47 Grove Street.
Thank you.
Everybody okay? All right. Just want to make sure that everybody understood clearly. There is an Article 1 personnel bylaw. That personnel bylaw, which is part of the bylaw that this town approved three years ago. If you look at that bylaw, we have a copy if you'd like, Chairman. In that bylaw, it states clearly in here because you've built ranges. And within those ranges, there's levels. And within those levels, what it looks like, we'll move it forward here. In that level, says Level 4 Classification. This is effective July 1, 2016, 1/6. Senior Center Directors of Grade 4. We all approved it. We had no issue. We approved it. $16 an hour. If you put into effect what the folks are asking you to do here on the Finance Committee and with the Board of Selectmen, it's less than what it is that you voted on. You can't do that. To you at least deserves what it is you voted on.
Jerry, just make sure you're speaking into the microphone so that anybody at home can hear as well. Just talk into the microphone so that it's being recorded at home, too.
Freaking mask, huh? This comes down to the fact of $16 an hour. It's right in your bylaws. I don't know what else you want to say. We want to pay her less than what we already approved should be done in '16? It's here.
You got to keep the mask up. Just talk into, instead of the audience, talk into the microphone. They'll hear you.
You guys okay?
And then everybody at home can hear you. Yep.
So you're talking $16 an hour, $19 is the medium, and the maximum is $22 an hour. That's what you all voted for. And what you're asking this gal to do is to take out of the $6,000 that's given to it by the state for senior programming and pay for that because we don't want to pay for it even though we already agreed to it. You need to consider what you're thinking about here. Forget about percentages. You have a little number, the percentage looks big. We all know math. We all went to school, right? Think about what you're doing here, folks. Please consider it. And consider that $5,000 to help out 643 seniors in this town that you voted for to put a building in? That's too much. When we're already over, what are you going to be, close to budget? We're still going to make the absolute budget. We're going to be close. Great. What's five grand on a six-and-a-half-million-dollar budget? Please consider it and consider it strongly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerry. Would anybody else like to speak to the article? I'm going to let Gary from Finance Committee.
So a couple of points, just so we're clear. We're voting on the overall number for the Council on Aging. We're not voting on anyone's salary. The director is going to be able to allocate funds as needed, incorporating also whatever grant monies are available. So let's just be clear. We're not talking about paying anyone below minimum wage or anything along those lines. Yeah, I don't think these microphones are...
Did you switch it on, Gary?
I did. I did. I did. Can you hear me now? Okay, that's better.
Yes, thank you.
So again, what we're voting on here tonight is the total number for the Council on Aging. We're not voting on anyone's salary. Secondarily, I am sympathetic. And, you know, you guys will decide what you want to do tonight, and I think that's fair. I will remind people of where we were three years ago. And I'm going to remind you that the people that are going to ask for increases for this line item, for some other additional items, were also people that were generally supportive of the override. And that's fine. They're being consistent. It's okay. But I'll also remind you that when we took that override to vote, it was overwhelmingly voted down by the people of the town. And the repercussions of that were effectively shutting down the senior center, shutting down the library, turning off half the streetlights. And this wasn't the first time Millville's done this. It's happened in the past, 2012. So when times get tough, when our spending outgrows our income, those are the programs that get hit first. So all I'm going to say is that what we're doing up here is trying to be responsible, bring these programs back in step with our revenue increases, whether it's our annual two-and-a-half percent increase that we get, whether it's cannabis revenues, whatever that may be, such that we're sustainable and we're able to allocate those stabilization funds to improvements for the town. You're going to see some of those improvements this year, some last year. And there are a number of new initiatives that are started looking at the facilities of the town. So just keep that in mind, that however you vote tonight, you know, I think we'll live with it. But at the same time, the folks up here on the stage are really trying to look towards the future and put together a sustainable plan. And that plan includes increasing and building up our library facilities, our senior facilities, other aspects of the town over time, over time. But we're trying to do it responsibly. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Yes, sir. I, well, go ahead, Jen. I'm going to let this gentleman speak, and then we'll go over to you, okay? Can you just state your name and your address, please?
Larry Pearson, 17 Granite Circle.
Thank you.
First of all, a comment made earlier that there's already money for the senior center in the budget, that's out of the capital account. That's for the roof. That's not for the day-to-day expenses. And the few thousand dollars here, again, as pointed out by a previous speaker, is a very, very small percentage of the total revenue. And I have a somewhat related question, if this is the proper point. There's a negative in free cash because of waiting for state reimbursements. So that's only a temporary pause right now, is it not? That's going to be replenished and hopefully break even and have a plus beyond that, is it not?
So I'm going to let the Finance Committee Chairman speak to that.
Yeah, I mean, the answer to that is we don't really know. In theory, yes. But free cash is based on our expenses and revenue on any particular year, and it's analyzed on a year-by-year basis. So there is no way to project what free cash is going to be. It depends on a lot of different factors, so not necessarily.
May I ask another question?
Yes.
Several comments have been made about the cannabis revenue. What is that either in actuality over the last few months and what's projected to be?
Sure. Aubrey, do you want to speak to cannabis revenue?
I'd probably defer to Peter Caruso on that, or if he's able to talk to it.
Town Administrator, can you speak to cannabis revenue? They're wondering, kind of, is it actuals at this point? What's projected? It's been discussed. So can you use a microphone? Who took your microphone? No, you got to flip the switch on the top.
There we go. How's that?
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, so what's in the budget here for revenue forecasted is just $30,000. So it's an estimate of $1 million of revenue that the cannabis retail operation currently open will have in fiscal '22. In addition, there, we have the local option on the sales tax, so there's an additional 3% on top of that. So in the budget, right now, is $60,000 reflected, which I think is very conservative. I've spoken to the owner and know, I understand what their break-even point is. And it's significantly larger than $1 million. They are in operation. I don't know yet. Tried to get numbers today, but I don't know yet what they've done in the several weeks they've been open, so. So I think I'm conservative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. But I, getting back to this issue of the Council of Aging, I do feel it's very important to include this projected increase for the, if not 100%, at least a partial increase in the functionality of the senior center.
Thank you. Jen, do you want to? Can you just state your name and address, please?
My name is Pamela Dean Kobetish, and I'm the chairman of the COA. And I'm here to speak tonight on behalf of my COA board members and the seniors of Millville. The reason I asked to speak was that we are $5,000 short. That's no secret. Everyone knows that now. We are requesting the $5,000 for budgets for the senior director and for the senior van drivers. Our senior van drivers now are driving almost three times as much as they were in the past. The pandemic put everything on hold, but now it's doubled and tripled. Our senior citizens needing help getting to doctor's appointments because now they're not doing the phone thing anymore. They're now going to the doctors in person. And because of that reason, the vendors need them much more often. The van had to be used to bring people down to the Staples Stadium to get COVID jobs for different seniors. I mean, it's just, they need food. They're getting out. They're being brought once a week for food, grocery shopping. We can't say no to these seniors. There's 630 of them in Millville. And most of them have been, a lot of them have been homebound, and they need help. And I can't turn around and say to Tina Cook, who is our director of the senior center, "Hey, look, you're only worth 14 bucks now. We used to pay you 17.60." I just wanted to say that, you know, I'm grateful that the boards have increased it somewhat. I don't, I don't, you know, I want to make that clear, that we are grateful it's been increased somewhat. But unfortunately, it's just not enough. The senior center is really hurting. We need that $5,000 to pay for payroll. It's for payroll, nothing else. It's a little bit for Tina, for the director, it's a little bit for the van drivers. We need those van drivers. We can't lose them. We can't save people calling us. We can't take you for a van ride, take you to a doctor because, oops, we don't have the money this week. We have to have it from somewhere. And to wait till November when there's a new budget thing coming up, I don't think we should wait that long. It's critical that we pay these van drivers, we pay our senior director. These seniors have been housebound, homebound for so long. And I know we're all in it together, and it's for them. It's for the, it's for the good of the seniors. They should come first. They really should. I really believe that, and I thank you for listening to me. But please consider giving us $5,000 more so we can pay these valuable people for their valuable services for the town of Millville.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd wish to speak on the amendment? Aubrey?
Just wanted to, just as a point of clarification. So if we look at the Council on Aging budget that's in front of us, you'll see there are historical columns included as well. So the two line items that we're discussing here are really 280 and 281. So if you look at 2018, for example, line 280 was funded at $16,618. 2019 was funded at zero. 2020, $9,486. 2021, $9,837. And 2022, which is the year we're voting on right now, we bumped it up to $13,054, which represents an almost 33% increase. And the reason why I just called this to your attention... And the reason why I just called this to your attention is because, you know, I heard some moans and groans when Gary made his comment, but those who don't know history are doomed to repeat it. Column 2019, when that senior center admin salary got brought from $16,000 to zero, is what happens when we continuously overspend our budget by just a little bit every year, and then just a little bit more every year. And each one of those line items expands, right? Because we increase it year over year. So what this Finance Committee has been committed to do is to bring our funding up to stable levels that we can sustain for the long term. We do not want to be in a position where next year, we're talking about bringing an account, like the senior center admin director, back to zero. And so the 33% increase that we recommended was not based on how many hours the director was able to work, what rate per hour we're paying that person, it's simply what the town can afford to sustain for a line item long term. That's all.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Pat, I see your hand up, but I'm going to see if anybody else wishes to speak who hasn't spoken yet. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Okay. Pat, come on down, you can speak again.
So I guess as a town, we need to decide whether or not these services are important to the town. We've got police, we've got fire, we've got education, and we have 20% of our, the people in our town are seniors, 60 and above, 20%. These are the people that built the town, these are the people that built the senior center, helped on all of our different buildings. Do we want to support them or not? And I've been through the financial times, I've been through this town, I've been in this town for quite a few years, and I've seen it, seen it happen, I've seen the overspending. And I think it's wonderful that we're getting everything under control. I can't tell you how great it is that we know what we can expect, that we have a savings account. But we have to decide if we want to support 20% of our population. And that's not just seniors, it's veterans, it's people with special needs. The programs that we provide are for all of those people. That includes the director who is there all the time, and our van drivers. Again, we can't tell a person, sorry, we've run out of money, we can't take you to your dialysis appointment this week because the budget is gone. It's $5,000. I understand it's $5,000 added to the $6,600 from stabilization. It's $11,000 more than we wanted to spend to try to balance our budget. But we have to decide as a town, do we want these services or not? Is this what makes a town or not? Is it streetlights? Is it trash? What is it? What do we want? I, for one, want to support our seniors.
Thank you. Okay. So there was a motion made by Pat Finn to increase the senior center line budget from $38,674 by $5,000, up to an amount of $43,674, with the $5,000 coming from general stabilization. Is there a second on that motion to amend?
Second.
Second by Kathy Olet. We've discussed it, so at this point, I'm going to call for the vote. Because this will be funded from stabilization, it will require a 2/3 vote, as declared by the moderator. All those in favor of approving the senior center budget in the amount of $43,674 as amended, please raise your card. Put those down. All those opposed, please raise your card. Can I have a count from the back table of exactly how many registered voters are called in right now?
We have 61 registered voters.
61. So the amendment does not pass with a 2/3 vote. At this time, we're going to go back to the original budget in the amount of $38,674. Is there a motion to recommend the senior center budget in the amount of $38,674?
So moved.
Motion made by Aubrey, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jen. All those in favor of approving the senior center budget as recommended in the amount of $38,674, please raise your pink cards. Put those down. And then anybody opposed, please raise their pink card. The motion passes. So there'll be no adjustment made to that line item. The next line item that was held was line 324 for the library by Colleen Kuras.
Colleen Kuras, 12 Summit Street, can you hear me? Colleen Kuras, 12 Summit Street? Yes, louder? Okay. I just need some clarification. When Colleen and I spoke to the Finance Committee and talked about our budget, we asked for a certain amount, and then when we were seeing the amount written down, we were told it's being cut $4,644. We want to know why.
So that's a question for the Finance Committee? I'll let them address that.
Sure. So there was a Board of Selectmen meeting on May 3, where we discussed the budget in detail, and regrouped on it as a whole. And then there was a public hearing for our budget on May 4, of which all departments were invited to attend. So during our May 4 public hearing, we discussed the budget in full, we debated particular line items, and similar with the COA admin salaries and the COA van driver, the library admin salaries was adjusted slightly from the initial recommendation to what you see on the page today. So we increased it from $0 historically to $4,644 for the admin salaries, and that was consistent with the final budget that was recommended by the Board of Selectmen on May 3.
My other, my other question is, you say we own the money, whatever is on that line item is our, sorry, is our money. So we can move salary money to book money, book money to salaries, and vice versa, correct? Because years ago, we were told we couldn't move salary to any other line item or...
So I'll let Finn Com answer that one.
Yeah, that's a question for Town Council, I believe.
Okay. Town Council? The question, sorry, the question is, so as we vote these town department budgets for the library, their recommended budget was $41,680. Are they allowed to rebudget within categories because we're voting the overall department budget? Can they reallocate between expenses and salaries and vice versa in lines?
Yes, because they're the bottom line of each department.
So the answer to that is because we are voting the bottom line of the department, you can reallocate in between those individual line items.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other further questions on this department line? Seeing none, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the library's budget in the amount of $41,680.
So moved.
There's a motion been made by Aubrey, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brian. Any further discussion? All those in favor of allocating $41,680 to the library line, please raise your pink card. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your pink card. Okay, the motion passes. So at this time, we've made it through our budget, and there have been no changes to the bottom line. So we're going to go through and do an overall vote on the entire budget as presented. Because some of the funds for this year will be taken to fund our budget from stabilization, this will require a 2/3 majority vote. I just want to say that upfront. So we'd be looking for a motion that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $6,642,611, as deemed necessary to defray town expenses for all departments, including debt and interest and compensation for town officers, and to provide for the reserve fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2022. With such appropriation to be funded as follows: Raise and appropriate the sum of $6,594,911, and to transfer the sum of $40,820 from Septic Title V account, and to transfer the sum of $6,880 from the general stabilization account, for a total of $6,642,611, as set forth in the budget document presented to this town meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Aubrey, is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Brian. Any further discussion on the budget? All those in favor, please signify by raising your pink cards. Thank you. Anyone opposed, please raise your pink card. I see one. Okay. So the motion passes, but it is not unanimous. Article 7, capital items, fire department turnout gear. We'd be looking for a motion that the town vote to appropriate $16,000 to purchase new fire department turnout gear from the Public Safety Stabilization Fund. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Jennifer, is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Ken. Jennifer, would you like to talk to this article?
Sure. So with turnout gear for the fire department, it expires after a certain period of time. And these sets of turnout gears have, in fact, expired. So if someone were to use them and something bad would happen, that would be a tremendous liability. I also think we want to protect those that protect us, so this is one thing that we can do for the fire department this year.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this article? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Because this is being funded from a stabilization, again, it will require a 2/3 majority to pass. All those in favor of appropriating $16,000 for the new fire department turnout gear, please raise your pink card. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your card. The motion passes, and I declare it unanimous. Article 8, capital items for the senior center improvements. We'd be looking for a motion that the town vote to appropriate $17,500 to fund facility improvements at the senior center from a capital stabilization fund. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Jen, is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Ken. Jen, do you want to walk us through this one?
Yeah, absolutely. So there was some discussion around this coming on a capital item, so I just want to say that this year, the Capital Planning Committee decided, in the spirit of compromise and being flexible, we would bundle several repairs together. So normally, a capital item would only be funded from stabilization, provided it was $10,000 or more. And the senior center came to us with several smaller repairs, and really, none of them met the benchmark. So we thought, why don't we bundle, what are your most important ones to be done this year? And we can bundle that together. And it came out to the $17,500. So this alleviates some of the burden on the operational budget by making an investment in the building, and I think it makes sense to do so, because it is preserving a long-term asset, which is, in fact, the senior center building.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the article? Okay. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Again, because this is coming from a capital stabilization account, it will require 2/3 to pass. All those in favor, please raise your card. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your card. Okay, the motion passes, and I declare it unanimous. Article 9, capital items for library improvements. So we would be looking for a motion that the town vote to appropriate $16,550 to fund facility improvements at the library from the capital stabilization fund.
So moved.
Motion made by Jennifer, is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Ken. Jen, you're up.
Yep. So people might be looking at the warrant and see the $30,000, and then see we have $16,550 and wondering why that is. So it was brought to our attention that if we perhaps increased what we were funding, we were able to get more money from a grant. So we voted to up that amount by $30,000. So the next day, we found out we didn't get the grant. Peter went back to the library, we went back and decided to lower it by that amount, by the $13,450, and go to the $16,550 of the original repairs that were asked for. This was a very similar situation to the senior center, in that the staff at the library came to us with several smaller repairs, none of which made it to the $10,000 threshold. However, again, in the spirit of compromise and collaboration, the Capital Planning Committee decided that we would bundle everything together and look at it as a repair for a long-term asset, such as the library. And this will result in repairs for the building. And that's it.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this article? Colleen?
Colleen Kuras, 12 Summit Street. My question is, do you, with the cost of building materials skyrocketing, are we going to have to, we'll say, one of the things that we want to do is have a shed. What if the shed is going to take the 16? You know what I'm saying? Is it, can we come back and say to you, we need some more money next year, or...
Okay. So would Capital like to speak to that?
Yep. So what I would do is get estimates for the repairs that you have and prioritize them. And we do have a meeting in the fall, and we can see if it's $16,550, and it turns out that everything together is $21,000. As a member of the Capital Planning Committee, I would be very open to allocating a few more thousand dollars to the library for those repairs. I'm assuming the cost of a shed isn't going to go crazy to like $50,000 or $100,000? But we'll revisit that if that happens, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to give the Town Administrator an opportunity to weigh in on that as well. So the question...
I can't hear you. I can't hear what you said.
Okay, yeah, I was just going to repeat the question. So the question was, if this article passes and $16,550 is appropriated for building maintenance for the library, with the cost of construction being what it is recently, if they were to exceed $16,550 with the projects that they've requested and outlined, what should they do? So Jen said we could potentially go back to capital and request to increase. I just didn't know if you had any thoughts on that as well.
No, that would be my response as well. There's no, unless we find the Money Cares Act or otherwise and justify it, but that's not for these specific projects at this point.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any further discussion on Article 9? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. And again, I'll remind everybody, because this is coming from a capital stabilization, it requires 2/3 of the voters to approve it for it to pass. So all those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. Okay, the motion passes with a 2/3, but it is not unanimous. Article 10, BMR School Committee Statements. So we'd be looking for a motion that the town vote to authorize the members of the Blackstone Millville Regional District School Committee to be compensated for their services as such members, and to set the annual amount of said compensation at $1,500 per member, and $1,800 for the chairman. Is there a motion? Motion made by Jane Reggio, is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Adrian. Jane, would you like to speak to the article?
Not unless people have questions.
Not unless people have questions is the answer. So having said that, is there any discussion on the article? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. This is a majority vote, so all those in favor of the BMR School Committee Statements, please signify by raising your cards. please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise their cards. Thank you. The motion does pass. Article 11, the Town Bylaws Regarding Elections. I'm going to turn this over to the Board of Selectmen.
We're going to move to strike. A motion to strike this Article 11.
Okay, so Adrian has made a motion to strike the article, that they do not want this considered tonight. Is there a second? Second made by Andrew. Is there any further discussion? Adrian, would you like to speak to the article, or are we just striking it? Just striking it. Is there any further discussion from anyone in the audience? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of striking Article 11, signify by raising your cards, please. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise their cards. Okay, the motion passes. So that's been struck. Article 12, Cable Appropriations. We'd be looking for a motion that the town vote to appropriate $25,000 from the PEG Access and Cable Fund available fund balance to fund the cable appropriation... operation, excuse me, the cable operation for FY '22, starting July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022, under the direction of the Cable Coordinator. Said funds to be spent on professional wages in the amount of $8,000. Part-time wages, $12,000. And expenses, $5,000. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Todd. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Andrew. Todd, did you want to talk to this... No. Is there anybody who'd like to speak to the article? Anybody need an explanation? Would anybody like an explanation? Hi, Tim. Tim's here. He's coming down to... Tim was not supposed to be here, but he is here, so he's going to come down and speak to our article.
Hey.
Can you just state your name and address and role?
I'm Tim Levante. I'm the Cable Coordinator in Milville. So what's happening with this is, we had to change the type of account that the cable funds are part of, so nothing is changing. We just... We just had the past accountant just told us, we just have to do things correctly. So there's... It's all from the same PEG monies that we've been operating out of for the past however long.
Great. Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak to the article?
Thank you. Yes, just to follow up what Tim said, nothing changes with the way we do things. The money comes in from Charter Communications, goes into the PEG Access Fund and Cable Fund. This memorializes it in a technical manner to ensure we have the appropriation to keep the accountants happy, the CPAs happy, the auditors, as well as the folks at Division of Local Services. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Larry Pearson, 17 Granite Circle. While we're on the topic of cable, is there any direction made to try to improve the cable service in Milville?
Thank you for your question, sir. Unfortunately, this is one that I'm going to say is outside the four corners of the article and is not relevant to the budget. I would encourage you to hang out and chat with our cable team after the meeting, but it won't be appropriate for discussion right now. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Article 12, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The motion passes, and I declare it unanimous. Article 13 was presented to the Board of Selectmen to be included in the warrant as a citizen's petition. So at this time, I'd like a citizen to come up and make their motion. Can you just state your name and address?
Paul Olet, 382 Chestnut Hill Road. I moved that the town vote to appropriate $49,372 to purchase a new police cruiser from the Reserve for Continuing Appropriations Fund related to capital purchases no longer needed, including $19,372 previously set aside for police cruiser purchase needs, $10,000 previously set aside for TASER purchase needs, and $20,000 previously set aside for ambulance purchase needs.
So there's been a motion made by Paul Olet. Is there a second? Second by Kathy Olet. We'll give you three minutes to speak to the article.
Okay, I'll be brief. The original intent of the citizen's petition is to purchase a cruiser. How that gets done is kind of irrelevant, as long as the end result is that we purchase a cruiser. At the selectman meetings, at the finance meetings, and at the capital meetings, more so the selectmen and the capital, it was discussed that there are some accounts outstanding. The $19,000 and change was originally intended for the purchase of a police cruiser, so that's like for like. The $10,000 for TASERS that was set aside, those were covered in a grant that was obtained by Trish and the chief. So that account becomes, you know, money that's available. And the $20,000 previous for the ambulance, which was put aside from the Capital Planning Committee in the past to kind of save towards the need that we had for an ambulance, which, as we all know, we no longer need. So it's just appropriate, I think, to use those capital funds to fund a capital item.
Thank you. Is there anybody on the Board of Selectmen or Finance Committee that would like to speak to the article? Is there anybody in general who would like to speak to the article?
Hi. Justin Allen, Tina Road. I have two questions. Was the police chief and the police department, did they weigh in on this? And the second question is for the Finance Committee. I know that it was voted zero to five by the Finance Committee, so I'd like them to just kind of explain.
Thank you. Chief, would you like an opportunity to come down and speak?
Good evening, Chief Ron Landry, Milville Police. We've been discussing the purchase of a new police cruiser for a couple of years now. We do have four. Two of the four have about 100,000 miles or more on those cars. The other, the third one, is catching up very quickly, has about 60,000 miles. If we fail to buy this particular vehicle this year, next year theoretically, I'm going to request three. Because two will have, what, 140,000 miles? The other one's going to have, what, 110,000 miles? In the police industry, it is not acceptable to use a police car with that many miles. That's actually running miles and idling time as well. Add 20% to that, a bunch of numbers, and it's obvious that we show a need for the cruiser. The petition identifies three line items, opportunities to get the money from. One is TASERS. I did request $10,000 to buy new TASERS. I found a grant. The grant was $30,000. We found our own TASERS. We didn't need the 10. $19,000 or $20,000 is already sitting in the account for a straight cylinder cruiser. And the additional money came from the ambulance, where we didn't need to buy the ambulance on the curfew of the state. So we do have the money there. It doesn't affect the tax rate. It doesn't affect anyone's pocket. The money's sitting there for the purpose of buying a car. Without the car, we can survive, but you're going to be driving vehicles with high mileage. And that's certainly not the way we want to respond to calls, emergency calls to protect and serve the community. So the bottom line is, we need vehicles that are readily available, ready to respond. Historically, the older they get, the more they break. And that's going to be the case. Think about it this way, we have four cruisers. We operate two per shift. So one or two of those cruisers, I use 16 hours a day, which is not, you know, what you want to do when you try to rotate your vehicles. So we show the need, we show the funding source. Like I said, if it goes down in flames tonight, next year, I'll be standing here saying, we need three cars. And we have the money for one, it just doesn't make sense to kick the can tonight and not buy a car. Any questions?
Thank you. Aubrey, did you want to speak?
Sure. And I can speak for myself, and then anyone else on the Finance Committee who wants to weigh in, feel free. But this particular article went through a couple of different renditions. The first article that was considered by the Capital Programming Committee was an article written to purchase a police cruiser in the amount of $50,000. It leveraged Public Safety Stabilization funding for its funding source. And that particular article was not recommended by the Capital Program Committee. So when the Finance Committee considered our articles, including the capital articles, for me personally, anyway, I was taking my cues from the Capital Programming Committee. The vote we had at that time was split at the Capital Programming Committee level, so it was not voted in favor. And so for me, you know, that was... That helped me decide my vote against this particular article. Since the Finance Committee voted at our public hearing just last week, the Capital Programming Committee actually met again to discuss this particular article, which is the funding source as laid out before us tonight. And they did vote in favor of purchasing the police cruiser. So, you know, the Finance Committee has not met since then, so our vote stands, but that is kind of just some background as to my personal reasonings behind my vote.
Thank you. Would anybody else on FinCom... Gary?
Yeah, I guess I should speak, since I've been the most vocal in the Finance Committee meetings on this topic over the last several years. We reestablished the Capital Program, Capital Planning Committee, it's called different things in different places, the Capital Program Committee last year. And they started from scratch, and they put together a five-year plan, looking across the capital needs of Milville. Part of that plan was an effort to put in a replacement schedule for police cruisers, such the Chief Landry would have, or whoever's the chief, you know, going forward, would have some certainty in when he was going to get replacement vehicles, such that he could manage his fleet against that, and there wouldn't be surprises and last-minute requests and so on and so forth. So based on the justification, we purchased a brand-new cruiser last year. Now we have a request for... Again, that was the plan that was established at the time, was a two-year replacement cycle. So every two years, we'd buy a new cruiser. So one year later, we have a request for a new cruiser, and you just heard the chief that he plans to request either two new cars next year, or if this doesn't pass, three new cars next year. So from my perspective, that would be four new police cruisers in three years. And again, to remain consistent with my previous discussions on a sustainable future for the town, I don't believe that kind of consumption and that replacement rate is prudent. And given the light of all the other commitments, demands, needs of the town, I voted against it, and I spoke against it, and I think that that was also part of our reasoning from this committee.
Thank you. Does anybody else from FinCom want to speak? I'm going to ask Jen, as the Chair of Capital Planning, to speak.
Jennifer Gill, 100 Bertha Letway. So, as mentioned, the Capital Planning Committee did meet and put together a plan, and we were looking at a two-year replacement cycle. And I reached out to several police departments to kind of get research on that. And one of the police departments was in for Haven, and they used their cars up to 100,000 miles in regular circulation, and they put them to like a secondary use for another 25,000 miles. We did get information from the chief regarding repairs and things like that, and nothing really seemed outrageous. And then the comment was made that we got off schedule, we had bought one in 2017, and we didn't buy one again until 2020. But this was voted down in 2019. So it's not like there were opportunities to replace, to augment that schedule and get it a little closer. It was the town had voted down, and then we put together the Capital Planning Committee plan every two years. All of that being said, when we came to our attention that there were these funds not used, in the spirit of compromise, and I'm hoping that this generates some goodwill between the Board of Selectmen and departments, we had these funds available. It wasn't hurting stabilization, and that's really my goal, is to protect stabilization funds, so that we have those for other purchases. So where this doesn't touch stabilization, I didn't see why I wouldn't support it, because we weren't hurting a stabilization account. So being compromising, trying to work with the chief to maybe get on a different schedule, we'll see what the request is for next year. Three is not happening, Chief Landry. I mean, let me just say that right now. Three is a lot. If he gets three new cars, then I get three new cars. So... But I think that we can, if we keep to the schedule, and even if we buy one this year, last year, and this year, and we get on that two-year schedule, I... And I'm not just saying this to be a pain. I think the chief is pretty smart, and I think he can probably manage to that schedule if we do two in a row and then do every other year moving forward. Or we can look if there happens, if we got a lemon police car, one we're repairing all the time, then we'll, of course, look at that, too. But, you know, wanting to compromise, this money, we weren't using it, it was sitting there. I like to pretend it's in a money bubble floating around Peter, so I just thought that we could use it in this way. Oh, and part of our plan, too, and I don't want to call out his name in case he doesn't want to speak, but we did have someone on the Capital Planning Committee who helped devise this two-year schedule. He's not on it anymore, but he is in Public Safety. So we did have... We consulted with other police departments, we consulted with other public safety, and that every two-year schedule, you know, we didn't make it up. We consulted with experts who know more than us. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak to the article? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Because this money is coming from Continuing Appropriations Fund, it only requires a majority to pass. Okay? So all those in favor of Article 13, citizen's petition, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The motion passes, but it is not unanimous. And with that, the meeting is over. We'd be looking for a motion to... Colleen, as a point of order, before we all pack up. One moment, please.
Mr. Colleen Curis, Paul Colleen. Okay, my question is to you, you said we're getting streetlights on. As of when?
Okay. So Board of Selectmen...
That's really important!
Or perhaps Peter Caruso could answer. The question was, part of the budget appropriated funding for streetlights. Can you give us a time estimate as to when we may expect to have the streetlights on?
So National Grid says, once we sign a piece of paper, which I have in my possession, once the Board... We have it on the agenda for their next meeting. The last time they said it was three to six months to get them turned on.
Okay, so once the agreement is signed, it'll be submitted to National Grid, and they estimate three to six months.
Moderator?
Yeah.
Just also, part of that process is they're going to change them out to LED lights.
And they will be changed to LED lights. Okay? So we'd be looking... I just want everybody to sit tight for a minute. Due to COVID, I'm going to ask that we kind of do an orderly dismissal, but we first need a motion to dissolve the warrant. Who made it? Mr. Gumash, Norman Gumash, is there a second?
Second.
Second, we're going to give it to Jen, because I can hear her clearly. All those in favor, please raise your pink cards. All those opposed. It is unanimous. Thank you. So can this section...